All I really need to do at this point is introduce our planning director, Chris Hawkes, and as you said, he's going to make one presentation for all of the agenda items. And so with that, we'll take, and he will remain at the table, and Mike is sitting very close by in case we have any follow-up questions for Mike as well. But he is going to do his best to explain all four items. Take it away, Chris.
Let me ask one thing. I have to do this all the time, too. If we could just make sure our phones are turned off. Everybody takes the time to just take that, so that way we don't interrupt the speakers or people that are asking questions afterwards. I appreciate that. So I even, even Mike turned his phone off, so. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mr. Darwin, and good evening, Mayor and Council again. And thank you, Mike. I couldn't have asked for a better introduction to this item. He's covered a lot of things that I think I was going to cover in this presentation. I appreciate that. I want to talk about the 2024 major general plan amendment cycle. So tonight, this is the culmination of 10-month process to develop and bring this year's cycle of amendments for your consideration and vote. So it's a process that is prescribed in great detail in state law. It tells us how we process these amendments, the timelines, the notification. All those things are in state law. Through open houses and public meetings, this has been brought to the public nine times, so in nine public forums, to explain amendments and answer questions. There's a lot of work that's contained within these amendment processes. Whether it's developing content, whether we're cataloging public comment, and there's a lot of public comment that we received here, or whether it's preparing meeting materials. There's a lot of effort that's expended by the staff to do that. Now, I do want to recognize some staff on my team. They've put together a lot of work. I want to recognize first Lori Dever. She served as the project manager. She's my deputy director. I want to recognize Cody Gleason, Brandon Foray in the traffic department, Greg Loper, and many, many others. There's been a lot of really good work. It takes a lot of time and effort in this endeavor. So again, tonight, we're proposing four amendments for your consideration. Now, each amendment pertains to a specific chapter within the general plan. So you can see items 26R through 29R. And what I'll do tonight is I'm going to summarize each one of them. But admittedly, all of the public interest and comment that we've received during this process really have all related to 26R, which is a smart growth element, and 29R implementation. So I'm going to spend most of my time on those two. 27R and 28R, those are largely text cleanups, largely housekeeping, but I will cover, I will summarize what those are all about as well. Now, before we jump in, I want to just add a few additional notes about what a general plan is. So I understand, you know, a general plan, it can be a mystifying topic. Sometimes it's compared to zoning or used interchangeably with zoning. It is not zoning. Zoning is very different. Zoning says what you can do on your property today. It has land uses that you can build today, setbacks, design standards. That's all embodied within zoning. That's not what the general plan is. The general plan, rather, that's the city's overarching policy document that guides growth and development in the city. It's an aspirational and a visionary document. The policies, they provide guidance on a number of topics. On your right, I know it's hard to see that, but if you could see it, there's 22 different elements within the general plan. They include things like land use, circulation, housing, economic development. So they embody a number of different facets of growth and development in the city. Another thing that's unique to Arizona about general plans, we're the only state in the country that requires a general plan to go to public vote. This has been in place since 1998. We've successfully taken it to public vote three times in that period. The last time the document was ratified was back in 2020, ratified by the voters. Now, with that said, once a general plan is ratified, good planning practice also recognizes that a general plan should not be a static document. It's a typical practice across municipalities to consider adjustments and amendments in the intervening years between ratification. And why is that? You want the general plan to be responsive and relevant to the development conditions that might arise during that period of time. They can be things like new infrastructure, new development conditions, new economic development inputs, some of the things that Mike talked about in his remarks. The TSMC has certainly changed the landscape and the level of inquiries that we're getting. A few years back, Amazon effect on retailing has changed where commercial applications go and how much commercial, right? All those things impact the development trends in an area. So there's a process enumerated in state statute because it recognizes that general plans will be amended from time to time. So there's very strict guidance in there about how general plan amendments are processed. State law mandates that the local elected body, which is the city council, has the authority and duty to act on any amendments. So we are obligated, as you know, to follow state statute. We cannot create some arbitrary process outside of state law. We're going to follow state law, and we're going to bring amendments to the city council. So let's talk about the amendments. I'll start with 26R, smart growth. There are two changes that I'll talk about within this amendment. The first one is, I'll describe in a little more detail in the subsequent slides, but we're asking to create a new state land, special land use designation, and we're asking to place that designation on two properties. Mike talked about the North Peoria Gateway and the Peoria Innovation Core. Those are the two properties we're looking to place this designation. And then a second, but a small request, is a request that we received from a private party that wanted to fold in a kind of a repositioning of their site. And so I'll talk about that at the last part of it. But that is a parcel along Lake Pleasant Parkway where they'd like to redesign the property. All right, so the basis for the request, number one, why are we, why are we doing this? As we step back and we contemplate our economic and community development goals, we have to recognize that, as Mike indicated, he spent a lot of time talking about this, we have few remaining private acres available. There's a reason why the developers are looking for those available parcels. When you look out and you see all the vacant acreage, because you can drive up and down to 303, and if you didn't realize who owned it, that's a lot of vacant land, right? There's a lot of land out there. But when you back out the BLM, Bureau of Land Management land, and the federal land that won't develop, effectively 75% of our remaining land that's vacant, it's all within the state land trust, okay? That acreage dominates the Loop 303 corridor and the North Lake Pleasant Parkway area. I'll show you a map in a second, and you can see all the blue and where it encompasses. So as we contemplate our future, there's no doubt that future economic prosperity is dependent on good, responsible collaboration with the state land department. It's paramount. So the amendments tonight, they bring, pertains to two strategic, well-positioned areas in the city. And the purpose, as Mike enumerated, was to create a framework around these two areas that then is a commitment to move forward and create a master plan, the zoning-level conversation about how those lands can be developed, shaped by our development guidelines. That's the purpose of that. All right, so this map on the right, this shows the public land. The land in yellow, north of State Row 74, that's BLM land, okay? That's land, they have a, they have a different position. It's more of a recreational position. They have their own master plan for that. Lands in blue, those lands, as you can see, if you look in the middle part of the screen, that's along the 303 and North Lake Pleasant. That's all state land department land. Now, the state land department, Mike gave a little history of that, but they manage over 9 million acres statewide within our city. There are 35,000 acres of state land within our city. What does that mean? That's 55 square miles. That's a large land basis within our city. Their mission, their mission is to optimize the economic value of their land for the underlying beneficiaries. There happens to be 13 beneficiaries. The largest beneficiary is common schools, K through 12 schools. They're 88% of all beneficiaries statewide. Now, there have been some misconceptions about state land. People have said, well, that's all open space, right? That it should be perpetually vacant, and it should not be developed. I'm telling you, it'd be a fallacy to believe that the land will not be auctioned off someday or the land will not be developed someday. It will be developed someday. Their mission, again, they have a constitutional mission. It is to hold land and optimize returns. Many of these lands I mentioned, they're strategically positioned along the Loop 303. So again, the general plan amendments, all they do is they put a box around two areas of land, I'll show you in a minute, and they commit to a master plan. And when I say master plan or PCD, PCD's Plan Community District, that is a zoning case. Vistancia has a PCD. They have a zoning case behind it, and they tell you exactly what you can build there. What are your standards? That's what we're committing to. We're partnering with state land, and we're committing to do master plans for those two areas. One of those is already in flight. The other one will unfold over the next year. As Mike mentioned, this is a process that's, it's not unique. It's already been utilized in North Phoenix. It's been successful there. It's been successful in Scottsdale and Queen Creek. So there's already a model for it. So this is something that we're doing that's already seen in success in other locations. As I mentioned, the new land use designation, we would place over these two areas. I won't spend too much time on the maps. I think Mike outlined that. The map on the left, that's the North Peoria Gateway, you know, centered around, like, I'm sorry, Loop 303, near Happy Valley. And the map on the right is the Peoria Innovation Core. That's 6,700 acres roughly north of Pleasant Valley and West Wing, all the way up to the State Route 74. That's all state land. And so this designation, again, points that partnership and commitment to develop a cohesive master plan for these areas. Really, what we're saying is, look, we want to treat these two areas as a cohesive with units with unified type of thinking, right? We don't want to see lands auctioned off in pieces, and developers come to the city, you know, in a disjointed fashion and ask for developments without there being some linkage or relationship or unified thinking among these parcels. That's why it's important that we work together and collaborate on a master plan that makes sense. And again, when we do the master plan, that's the level that we're going to talk about and understand and identify. What are the infrastructure requirements? What is the land use? What is the density? Where is the land use appropriate and what locations? What are appropriate buffers? That happens at the zoning phase, not the general plan phase. I do want to identify here is that the master plan approach, it's not too dissimilar with other examples within our city. So if you look at the map here on the right, you'll see three, you know, well-known, well-loved master plan communities in the city. Vistancia, Saddleback Heights, Lake Pleasant Heights. And if you look at the brown color below them, that happens to be a master planned area designation. And what that says is, there's an underlying PCD or master plan below those. And there is. You can, you know, transparently, you can go to our website. You can look at a document. What is allowed in Vistancia, at what location? What is allowed in Saddleback Heights? We have those documents that are put out there for public review. So that's all we're trying to capture here, the general plan amendment. In no way does it change the natural critical areas on a site. It doesn't change existing regulations. It really just puts a box around an area and commits to a master plan. That's what it does. All right, so we've heard some misconceptions in the community about what this is. So I want to clarify a few things again. The general plan designation, this does not change zoning. It is not zoning. It doesn't tell you anything about what can be built here. I've heard comments in the community about, well, this is going to, you know, facilitate all this industrial development. No, it doesn't say anything about the land use that can be developed there. That happens in the, again, in the zoning phase, in the master plan phase. That's where we identify that. So it doesn't promote any one land use type either. We don't know what the land use is going to be. We know in the, in the North Peoria Gateway, because we have a zoning case that's materializing. But in the Peoria Innovation Core, which will unfold, we're going to have to work through a public process and identify what land uses make sense and what locations, at what intensity and density. That'll be determined. That all gets shaped in that next page. And with large areas, as Mike indicated, we would expect a multitude of land uses. When I think about the Peoria Innovation Core, that's 6,700 acres. Let me relate that to you. That's about the same size as Vistancia. Vistancia is 7,100 acres, so that's about 10 square miles. It's a lot of land. And I can imagine, if you think about a master plan, 10 square miles, are you going to see 10 square miles of industrial? No. You know, the land has a whole number of constraints and challenges. Everything from roadways to overhead power lines, canals, things that will determine what types of land uses make sense and are appropriate in different locations. I can envision a master plan. Mike walked through a lot of things where you're going to see residential buffers. You're going to see areas where commercial hospitality might make sense, other areas where, you know, employment might make sense. It's going to be a multifaceted land use plan that we do with the zoning stage. And the general plan designation, again, has no impact on those land use decisions at this point. All right, I'm going to pivot and just talk about a separate request. This is a small, but also an important change. This request pertains to the former Peoria Regional Medical Center site on Lake Pleasant Parkway. It's hard to see on the screen, but there is a red and white box around a purple-shaped site along Lake Pleasant Parkway, and that's where the request pertains. So you'll recall, one time, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago, there was a contemplation for a hospital and medical campus. And that never materialized, right, for various reasons? And they went through a bankruptcy, and the property was broken up. And so now we have a landowner that owns the PRMC site on Lake Pleasant, and they have different ideas about what they want to do on that property. And so what they've asked for is, hey, public use really just says I can do hospital or civic uses. I really want to broaden the potential uses that are available here. So what they've asked to do is, can we designate that property to office local commercial? And what that designation describes is office uses, medical uses, some small-scale retail uses. So they just want to position it for a future rezone where they can then broaden the range of available uses there. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to talk about the next item, the next three items, and then I'll come back and talk about the public outreach and some of the input we've received. So the second one is 27R, that's Chapter 4. That's our transportation section. So what this section does is it has our transportation policy. We have a circulation map in our city, and that identifies all of the existing roadways in the city and all the future contemplated roadways. It breaks it down from arterials to collectors. And so in this exercise, really, this is largely housekeeping. So we're looking to make some text changes. We're reflecting the cessation of the Peoria on-the-go program. So we're removing some of the text from the chapter. We're also removing the major and minor street classifications. You know, we have minor and major arterials. We have minor and major collectors. Well, our engineering standards no longer make those distinctions. So we're just removing that nomenclature from the text. And we're also updating our circulation map. So in your packet, there is a, there is a spreadsheet there with 57 links that are seeking some adjustment to them. I can tell you, 95% of those are recognizing existing conditions. They're either roadways that are no longer future, that are now existing because they've built, been built by either a capital project or a development project. So we're just trying to clean it up and recognize existing conditions. There are a few alterations that are in there. There's a handful of them. One of the alterations that is in there, but we've modified it since the Planning and Zoning Commission, that deals with Asher Hills Road. So Asher Hills, if I can pronounce that, it is located halfway between the 303 and the cap along Lake Pleasant Parkway. That's designated as a collector in the proposed amendment. As we look at the future contemplation of that Core 2, we believe it's better suited for an arterial roadway. So we're asking that that classification be upgraded to a roadway within the circulation map. Okay, the next chapter I'm going to talk about is 28R, Chapter 6, Arts, Culture, and Recreational Enrichment. In this section, we are exclusively talking about text changes that impact a few pages. And really, what we're doing is expanding upon and better distinguishing the various types of parks, recreation centers, and open spaces in the city. So the terminology has evolved somewhat based on some best industry practices. So with this chapter, really, is more maintenance to reflect the latest conditions. And so we're just updating the text to reflect all the different various types of parks and recreational venues and opportunities in the city. And then 29R, Chapter 8, Implementation. This pertains to how the general plan is amended and reviewed. So again, state law, they leave it to each community to decide what constitutes a major alteration to your land plan, or, said a different way, a major general plan amendment. And once that community identifies what a major general plan amendment is, then those amendments are to be decided by the local representative body or the city council. Now, early in the process, the city had proposed a change to increase the threshold for major amendments to, from 80 acres to 640 acres. And the reason was really to make that more in line with our peer communities of our size, and to create some efficiencies in the process. Really, the process between minor and major amendments is nearly indistinguishable. They're same level of analysis, the same level of review that goes into that. There's just a few nuanced differences there. We did receive a lot of comment, a lot of public feedback on that. City elected to pull that one back, and we've pulled that one back, back in April. Now, that was five months ago. We're still receiving emails all over the place about, you know, why is the city changing the major mimic criteria? Let me just be really clear, we're not. That's no longer on the table. We're not asking to change the amendment criteria. It's 80 acres, it's going to remain 80 acres. That's the, that's the proposal here. Now, there is one change we are asking for. It's a really minor change. You can't see it on the screen. I'll read it to you, but it's that kind of dashed red there. We're asking that if you have a roadway segment on our circulation plan, and we want to alter the, the location in a minor manner, because on our circulation plan, roadways for the future is just a very conceptual location, right? It's not, it's not fixed. It's, it's very conceptual. So if that roadway alignment is altered to some degree, or if we want to recognize simply a roadway that's now been constructed, I don't have to come back and bring an amendment to this, this board and go through all the process. We can just make that change because it's a really minor reflection of what's already happened. Okay, I want to talk about public outreach, and I want to talk about some of the comments and concerns that we've heard in this process. So major amendments. I mentioned state law sets out a very clear, distinct process. It requires 60-day review. And what that means is, once we've developed the amendments, we're required to start 60-day review, and we send out the amendments not only to the public, but we send them out to all the different alphabet agencies out there. You know, Department of Transportation, all of them that you can think of, MIMDOT, BLM, and so forth. That started April 12th, and that ended in June 19th of 2024. During that time, we posted all our information on the city's websites. We did receive two letters from some of those agencies. We received a letter from ADOT. They didn't have any comments. We also received a really good letter from the Game and Fish Department. They had quite a few suggestions. But none of those suggestions were really within scope of what we were talking about. So we said, hey, great letter. Let us keep those for future reference, and maybe when we do the ratification, we can look at those again. And we also send the materials to the Peoria and Deer Valley Unified School District. They were contacted. We haven't received any comments from those agencies. Now, we enacted or utilized a number of methods and platforms to push information out. We want to be as transparent as possible. We've used our website. Anytime we had new information to push, we've tried to push information out through legal ads. We understand not everybody reads legal ads. In fact, many people don't read legal ads. But we want to push it out through utility billing, right? Everybody gets a utility bill. We put, use that method to do that. Also, social media and print media. We've had nine public meetings during this process, and you can see them on the screen, starting out back in March where we had a city council study session. We've appeared in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission a number of times. We had two open houses back in April. One was in person at Rio Vista, the other one was virtual. And we've received really good attendance at both of them. We had 50 to 55 persons that attended each open house. And I got to tell you, that's a record for general plan amendments meetings. Usually, we get 10 people that come to a general plan meeting. So that was, that was quite a turnout, and we received some feedback from those. And we've also, in this process, we've received nearly 100 letters of correspondence. So there has been widespread participation in this process. The case went to, or I should say, the cases, they went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The state law requires that they conduct two public hearings. The first one was held off-site, and again, that's because state law requires it to be conducted off-site, July 18th. And we also had a public hearing on August 15th, 2024. At each planning commission meeting, we had one speaker present, and each speaker did speak in opposition at both meetings. After asking a lot of good questions and deliberating on the issue, the commission ultimately voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to the city council of all four amendments. So just to look at the process to date, because we've received a lot of letters up until we went to planning commission, and I'll tell you, in the last few days, we've received a lot of letters as well. So to date, we've received correspondence from 92 individuals. We received correspondence from 66 of those individuals that were in opposition to some or all of the general plan amendments. We've received correspondence from 16 individuals in support. And 10 of those letters, either there were some questions or inquiries as part of the letter, or they didn't have any clear stated position. So I'll put it in that category. So I want to unpack that a little bit. Those that were in support, they cited the need, the importance of having a cohesive development plan that maximizes the potential of the land. They cited that this can facilitate economic development opportunities and ultimately reduce outcommuting. Less people are going outside of our city to look for job opportunities or restaurant opportunities or service opportunities. Now, those in opposition cited, I would put it under three categories. One, a belief that all major amendments should go to the voters, that we should maintain the acreage, you know, we should maintain it at 80 acres. Again, we've already made that change. We didn't, we haven't changed that. And also a perceived lack of transparency. And I'll speak to these in more detail in a minute. Secondly, there was some opposition that cited the need to protect state land as open space. It should not be developed. We should, we should retain it as open space. And thirdly, and most importantly, we received a lot of opposition to the idea of an airport or the perceived industrialization of Peoria. And that was the vast majorities of the, of the letters of correspondence that we received. So let me unpack that a little bit further. Those that said that the general plan amendments should go to voters or we should maintain the acreage. Again, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, state law, very clear in how we handle these. Governing body is required to decide upon the general plan, any amendments thereof. It doesn't say that we create some arbitrary process outside of state law. We follow state law. That's what we've done here. As I mentioned, there are no changes to the major mimic criteria, no substantive changes, rather, right? It's still 80 acres. We were not proposing a change. I talked about a little minor cleanup to that criteria. And as I mentioned, we pulled that back in April. Transparency, I mentioned. We, we, this process has unfolded over 10 months. We've had nine public meetings. We've received over nearly 100 pieces of correspondence. We've utilized a variety of outreach methods to get the word out. We've been, we've been nothing but transparent through this process and trying to make sure people understood, had the right information, and the ability to participate in the process. We've had comments about the need to protect state land as open space. I mentioned, and Mike mentioned, state land has a very clear constitutional mission, and that's to optimize value for the trust, right? When they, when they lease land, when they sell land, they want to bring and optimize its, its value for that underlying beneficiary. It's going to develop someday, folks. Now, where we can have a part is, we can help shape how it develops. And that's what the zoning case, the master plans are all about, is shaping how it develops. The master plan that provides that unified cohesive framework that we can then address future development on those areas. We already have codes to protect critical areas. We have really good standards that protect washes, that protect natural areas, that protect cultural areas, that, that protect, you know, significant vegetative stands. We have those regulations in place. This does nothing to, to displace that. And when we bring a zoning case forward, those regulations will remain in place for those development cases. Now, I mentioned that we've got, I can't remember the count, but we had quite a few letters that were in opposition. I think I mentioned 66 individuals in opposition. Over half of those letters cited opposition to the airport exploration or what some letters characterize as the industrialization of Peoria. That was most of the letters in opposition is what we heard on those. And I understand, and as Mike mentioned earlier, there are certainly strong opinions in the community about the airport. But let's put it in the proper position, folks. The airport feasibility, as we mentioned, that's an independent and multi-year exploration. That has, that process has its own timeline, its own process, and its own decision points. And all of those are independent from what happens here. Said another way, there is no nexus between the general plan and whether these are approved. It doesn't impact that exploration. It's a separate, independent exploration. Also want to address the notion of the industrialization of Peoria. Again, I mentioned, all this designation does, once again, is draws a box, says we're going to do a master plan. When we do the master plan, that's when we develop and identify what those appropriate land uses are. When you're talking about 6,700 acres, you can have a multitude of land uses that come out. Is it all going to be industrial? Absolutely not. There's no market for that, and it's just not going to unfold that way. There's going to be lots of different land uses that we'll, that we'll see in different areas. And then finally, I want to end with, what are the, what are the implications if we don't approve the amendments tonight? Now, I've mentioned, these are two very important areas. There isn't a lot of vacant, developable land left for development options, for community and economic goals here. There are a few private sites to, to advance these goals. As I mentioned, one option could be that state land can certainly choose to auction off a property here, a property there. That developer could come forward. They could choose to do a rezone, and the rezones that do come forward may not relate to one another. They may be fairly disjointed. We've seen that occur in other places, and that's not the preferable, it's not the advantageous position to be in. position to be in. But then there's another possibility too, and that's the potential of lost opportunities. What does that signal to state land department? Does that signal that we're not serious about a partnership and engaging in proper community and economic development? Perhaps state land isn't interested in the city anymore, maybe they turn their limited resources to other areas. And certainly, we don't want to miss that opportunity, we have a really good opportunity right now, we have a good collaboration with the state land department, we have their attention, we're working together to try to find mutual benefit, and I would hate to lose that opportunity if we don't approve these amendments tonight. So in closing, key findings. General plan, as I mentioned, it's a living document, long-range decisions are periodically reconsidered to reflect new conditions. The amendments, we processed them in line with state law, we stayed in alignment with state law. We think it constitutes an overall improvement, not only to the plan, but also for the good of the community and moving forward. We provide, we believe that the smart growth amendment, these new state land areas, provides for better land stewardship and resources. And finally, the changes clarify and satisfy the maintenance obligation, advances the overall goals and policies of the general plan. So Mayor and Council, one nuance with major amendments. Again, happy to take any questions you have. It does require four separate actions. When you take an action on a major amendment, state law requires, for passage, there has to be a two-thirds majority, so that's five of seven council members have to vote for it, for an amendment to pass. And with that, I'll hold and happy to answer your questions.
Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, Chris. The second to last slide that you had, you talked about disjointed development, can you explain what this, if we don't do this amendment, what that property could look like if it sells to somebody, you know, it develops differently than what?
Sure, sure. You know, just think about the Pure Innovation Corps, state land, there's nothing holding them back from auctioning off a piece of property, you know, they can certainly auction off, the land isn't zoned today, right? So a developer would have to bring a zoning case forward, right? They could auction off one or a series of properties. And so, the zoning case that gets brought forward by developer, they don't have the benefit of a larger cohesive thinking that's been done to kind of bring all of this together. So they would have, they would bring one development concept that might cannibalize another idea that's better suited downstream or so forth. The master plan allows us to look at all of the implements, all the planning determinants, collectively and together, to try to determine what are the best land use options in what
Counselor Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, good presentation. Can you tell me, what's the difference in terms of restrictions or requirements, or even land availability between state land and BLM land?
Mayor, Councilmember Patena, good question. So, I showed a map a little while ago about all of the public land ownership, and we've got a lot of land that's certainly owned by the state land department, we've got a lot of land that's also within the domain of the BLM, Bureau of Land Management. They have a very different mission than state land department, they largely have a recreational mission. And what that means is lands north of 74, State Route 74, they have their own master plan, and they identify suitable uses within their area of control, and so they have their own master plan. So they have a very different mission than state land department. Also, we have other public lands, particularly around the Lake Pleasant, it's actually owned by the Department of the Interior, right? But it's managed by the county, they manage Lake Pleasant Regional Park. So all of these agencies have different missions and different interests in doing that.
Thank you. And my second question is, I'll jump on Councilman Edwards' question. He said, if we fail to approve the amendments, they'll be uncertain and disjointed development of state land areas. What could that mean for the city of Peoria in terms of negativity?
Mayor, Councilmember Patena, great question, and as I indicated earlier, that could result in a couple of things. Development cases that are brought forward that might be, there might be a program for that piece of property, but there isn't any larger linkage or relationship to other development that's around it or downstream from it in terms of infrastructure, in terms of land use and compatibility. So that's one. Two, I would say, is just to reiterate, and this is probably the biggest point here, and that is, lost opportunities. And that is, you know, state land or looking elsewhere for opportunities, and I think Mike wants to say a few things.
I told you never.
Go for it.
I feel like this is one of those tag. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Patena, we're in a unique situation, a unique time, right? TSMC opened up opportunities in North Phoenix that just weren't present, and that's one sector that's important, and I think that we don't lose sight of the opportunity and the time for that. But I don't want to say that that's the only reason, because, as Chris said, it's not like you're going to develop 6,700 acres of industrial application, there's going to be much smaller application than that. As we look at it from an economic development standpoint, and I'll use the North Peoria Gateway as the most pressing example, if you look at the corner of Happy Valley and Vistancia, this council voted to change in a CIP project to redo that intersection to fix the traffic flow, there's a 100-acre parcel of land there that opens this an amazing opportunity for commercial and retail applications. I live in this area too, and we're all tired of driving different places to get things, right? We have to bring, Jen Stein just did a survey of what restaurants and retail the community wants, where are you going to put it if you don't have the land to develop it? So you have this unique partnership, again, this strategy has been in place for about six or eight years of the council and previous administration and previous staff trying to bring this land to market specifically to generate tax revenue. If you don't generate additional tax revenue as the city grows, you either have to raise your tax rates, you have to cut your services, or in this case, you generate additional revenue by spending money in your own community, and we need to bring the land to market to be able to do that. So for me, the biggest loss in this whole thing is, you vote no here, then you stop the progression of bringing the land into play, because you don't have private land to bring into play, it's through state land is your success. So by voting no here, you're voting no against economic development, and you're actually looking for ways to say, you would end up having to decrease the service level or increase taxes to cover the growing costs of the city. I mean, that's the cold hard truth.
Anyone else? Nope. I want to, we're going to go through questions here, I've got a list of people, do you two mind staying in those seats?
We'll be here all night.
Well, that's the intent is to not be here all night, I think. But I do want to point something out before we kind of get started on a path. One is, I'm going to set the tone, whoever is speaking, no matter on which side, the rest of the group is going to be respectful towards their opinion. That does not mean you have to agree with it, does not have to mean you have to agree with myself or one of the other council members. As council members, we literally just had this conversation, and some people may say that I'm lecturing, I've seen that statement a few times. I'm going to tell you the same thing I would tell my kids, if you can't be respectful towards each other, don't have the conversation. It's that simple. So, we are going to respect each other's opinions, we are going to respect the other people, and that means that when a person is speaking, that means that you are not going to hem and haw, you're not going to be disagreeable in the situation, and you're going to respect their tone, and if you clap, I don't mind if you clap. I just don't want it to be like, everybody goes nuts over this thing. Listen to what somebody says on either side, and respect your neighbor's opinion. We all live next to each other at some point in time or another, and after this vote is over with, or after this year is over with, guess what? We're all still going to run each other at Fry's, or QT, or whatever restaurant we're going to. Hopefully, after we get this done, we just have a lot more restaurants. So that's the whole intent, right? So, with that, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to call Ms. Doreen, I'm just going to go through the list. Is, is everybody out of the pine room? I'm just trying to be respectful, is everybody in this room now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that way we don't have, I'm just trying to make sure that we have people, I don't want them to have to go over. Ms. Doreen Power.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but would you mind gabbling us into the public hearing?
Yes, I apologize. Thank you. We are now in the public hearing. Ms. Doreen Power.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Doreen Power, I live in Mesquite District. Desert views, outdoor activities, and a suburban lifestyle is why many chose Northwest Peoria as home, yet many still support balanced growth. However, I do not support these amendments to create a special land use category of 8,300 acres, because I do not trust what will be developed. Why? We talked about Five North earlier, and as you claimed and mentioned, the developer does have the right to develop based on what is zoning. But it also goes to the point that many of us residents did feel misled, the diagrams even shown tonight still show office in a commercial diagram. So, yes, we were misled and maybe naive, we did not read the 400-page Vistancia PCD, we will not make that mistake again, and that is why we are here, trying to understand the future of our commercial, our residents and our city. The city also claimed that they had no control, yet your own economic flyer states, the city controls 50 acres within the commercial core. The site is shovel-ready, ideal for semiconductor and advanced manufacturing suppliers. And again, we were blamed for not paying attention. I had hoped leadership would not turn Vistancia into fabrication facilities and fast food, but now we learned through the newspaper article, additional semiconductor companies are likely coming to Vistancia. The city may feel it was premature or not required to share that information, but for many of us residents living close to the site, who are already grappling with aggressive growth, it definitely seemed like we were hit over the head with that information in the way that we received that. I don't think we should have to wait until there is a site plan for us to be aware of that significant of a development in our community. The airport, we also talked about that earlier, 75% voted no on the airport. We mentioned that it doesn't matter, you can continue with your airport exploration if the airport is in the PIC, which two sites are, or not. Maybe I would feel better if those sites, particularly Site 1, was not in the general plan or the boundaries of the PIC, because as we just heard, the next step after this happens is, goes to zoning. So that is a concern for us. I think that a lot of people do not support the airport, and some do not even know it's possible. And all Mesquite, actually, all Peoria residents will pay for it, likely subsidize it with taxes, higher fees, or by diverting funds from other priorities, like when the $25 million is moved from somewhere to purchase the land for an airport, even though it has not been proved as necessary and directly benefits only a few. So I do think the airport is a relevant discussion for the general amendments topic. The general plan is the foundation for future zoning, and these amendments will allow thousands of acres, including NPG, which is adjacent to Vistancia, proposed right now as mostly commercial, mixed use, and employment, which is vaguely described as where somebody works, with some parcels suggested to be allowed industrial and manufacturing. The ASLD presenter admitted that NPG could be all fast food, or almost anything the developer wants, as long as it complies with zoning, with limits mostly due to topography and aesthetics. Environmental risk and water are also significant concerns with manufacturing and industrial.
Thank you, ma'am, I apologize, we're only doing three minutes per speaker, I apologize.
I did add a few ad lib based on the information that was presented earlier. Basically, can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
I did specifically have the question, has the city demonstrated that the criteria that these amendments do not unduly impact the city's water supply, have those been met?
Do you want to answer that?
Mayor, we need to be, this is a public hearing, we should not be answering questions from, we can answer the question after the fact.
We will try to get you an answer after we go through the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, I do not support these amendments, I do not trust that they will be balanced, cohesively managed as the city claims, and not threaten existing communities or our city's resources.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I realize, again, I realize, I don't mind if you clap, we're going to continue, you can clap, get it over with, let's move on to the next thing, or we're going to be here for probably another two hours, I'm okay with that, because my bedtime's not nine o'clock, so. That's meant as a joke for everybody, right? Trying to bring some levity a little bit to some of, I know Bill's over here like trying to write, I know Bill's like, wait, mine's 8:30, right? Mr. Paul Smith.
And the clock sucks. First of all, I like Mike, Mike's really one of your best people. He mentioned the idea that this concept has been going on for a long time. Back in 2017, Kathy Carlet said, "The conversion of a bedroom community to employment hub is relatively a new way of thinking about suburbs. Current ideas compel us to look for new ways to spend more time close to home, bring about the creation of mixed-use centers where residents can live, work, and play together." So what's going on is old, it is, it really is. Now, what, I guess, this is tough, because I'm trying to do Vistancia PCD with your general plan, so if I get them confused, my apologies. As far as the general plan proposed change, on page 3.8, section 3.4, landowner's ownership, you remove from the original, more of our state land parcels with high scenic value or habitat, attributes may be designated or otherwise presented for conservation pursuant to applicable state laws and city ordinances. So this was removed. In other words, you know, like maybe concrete over Pleasant Lake and make it an airplane landing zone, right? I mean, I'm just joking here, but it's not, you know, so you removed that, so to me, that's, wait, you know, the question is, you guys were talking all about the state land as a financial thing, but does state land have any purpose other than to generate money? Does it have intrinsic value or beauty, you know? And not to say you can't do it all, but you hear you're saying, we're going to take it all away. And now, as far as the general concept of the, of both multi-use, you know, I look at that, and I sit there and go, gee, that means whatever you guys really want to do, you get to do. Let's look, at one place, the general plan says that you can have a massage parlor or a tattoo parlor, okay? How about if we don't want that? But it's already in the general plan, all right? So a person can put it in, and now it's up to the residents to turn around and go, we don't want that. You know, before it was, well, that's not in the general plan, so now you're going to have to try to convince the city council to do something. So, this is kind of reverse roles, you know? It's now the residents having to complain to not have something put in, rather than force that. And I know I'm out of time, and I never have enough time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. So I do want, I do want to, I'll kind of address something that we want to point out that has been addressed in multiple presentations, out of the 8,300 acres out of the total acreage, not every single one of these pieces of land are actually buildable, right? So, we clearly, everybody up here lives, and everybody in this room, hopefully, lives in the city of Peoria. We don't want to take away open spaces, in fact, we actually have a city ordinance and code of how we actually have open spaces when it comes to development, and you know that, obviously. So, there's a lot of properties that will not be, the issue is, is when it comes to the state land trust, just so everybody understands, is the job of the state land trust is to drive revenue to that. Again, that does not mean every single, even though we're putting this into the general plan, does not mean, or that we possibly put this in the general plan with a vote, it does not mean that every single one of those pieces of property are built, so.
But I guess my one question is, why did you remove that state land parcel with high scenic value?
Unfortunately, I can't answer a question, I just can, I can address your state, no, that's okay. So, but we can talk afterwards and kind of go from there. So, I appreciate your comments, though, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the time being here this evening. By way of introduction, I'm president and CEO of Vestar, and we are a longtime Arizona shopping center developer, been doing it in the Phoenix area for about 35 years personally, and some of our projects you may recognize are Tempe Marketplace, Desert Ridge Marketplace, Queen Creek Marketplace down the other end of the valley, as well as closer here, Lake Pleasant Town Center, I guess it were you called Four Corners, as I understand it. Anyway, having worked with the state land department for really my entire career, I want to applaud how you guys are approaching this land up here in North Peoria, planning it ahead of time, so you don't end up with hodgepodge development that's happened in so many parts of the valley with state land. And as a developer of high-quality commercial facilities, it's paramount important to us to look at, and more importantly, our tenants, which are, you know, major retailers, restaurants, theaters, entertainment facilities, et cetera, they want to understand how growth is going to happen, how it's planned, and it's methodical. So they, because they thrive in these communities that have a mixture of uses, that, you know, residents don't have to commute an hour to work, but they can work within their community, so they can spend their time and their dollars in the local community. So, anyway, I just wanted to come here tonight, and the other thing, this reminds me so much of Desert Ridge 20, really 25 years ago, long before the 101 freeway existed, long before Mayo Clinic or any of that was up there, the resort, we went up there and to develop Desert Ridge Marketplace, knowing that there was a master plan in place for the entire Desert Ridge Core there, that we could do this innovative development, high quality... development, high quality, knowing what was going to come around us, surround us over the next 20 years. And it's just a prime example of what well-planned growth can do to benefit in a community. And again, I want to point that out, the parallel, because it is, it is and was on state land, and is one of the first major developments that the state land department has done. So I don't want to take a ton of your time, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. John Forsyth.
I am John Forsyth. I'm going to have to be honest with you, which I'm sure is going to shock all of you. This city has just lost my trust in the last couple of years. So I was one of the two people that spoke at the zoning and planning commission against the special land use designation. And the reason I did so was, I believe, that that is a gateway for the city to do things. Now, specifically, at the zoning and planning, I talked about the airport. But that is a way for the city to overrule the will of the people. Now, with that new designation, all it's doing is, it's giving the city a little bit more leeway to give land no designation, it's just special. We're going to master plan it, but zoning and planning already does rezoning every time they meet. So I don't understand why we need a new designation, especially when residents are speaking out for two reasons, a helicopter and an airport. You know, we talked about, what are the state land department going to think about us? Who cares? To be honest with you, I couldn't care less. We're in alignment with state law. We don't need to make ratifications or amendments to our general plan. We have time. We have time to build trust again, to be honest. So everything I've heard here tonight aligns with all the research I have done, and I have major concerns with special land use and an airport. There's a major expansion of Lake Pleasant Road north of the 303 to the cost of almost $50 million. That's really expensive. We've discussed that here in the city council. That road is a tree-lined road specifically to go to an airport. I mean, it's a designer road. We know where the airport's going to go. It can only fit in one area. We admitted it tonight. It is Carefree Highway and Lake Pleasant Roads. Depending upon the runway orientation, it's going to be directed directly at Vestancia. So you're asking for a lot of leeway from the citizens who are losing trust in our government. And I do not support, just as I did before, the amendment for special land use. Thank you.
Ms. Corky Haynes. Ms. Corky Haynes.
Mayor Beck, councilmen, and staff, I am definitely in favor of a master city plan. I do not want to see just random developers coming in and randomly putting things up specially. Mayor Beck, you know me with high-rise apartments, so I am in favor of it. I really do think it's smart growth. Years ago, went to visit my sister who moved to California, moved to Irvine, and drove up, and we fell in love. It was a master plan community with everything from your commercial homes, industrial, all beautifully landscaped, and right off, I would want to live here. Fast forward, we vacationed now several times in Seaside, Florida. Again, a beautifully master planned community. You want to live in those kinds of places. So I am definitely for it. To me, it would be such a dumb move on our part if we didn't purchase this land when it becomes available, and then create plans that will benefit our community. Myself and Barbara Wiley actually made an appointment this few months back and talked with your head zoning guy, I can't remember his name right now. He spent a whole hour with us explaining exactly what this North Peoria gateway would look like. Barbara had a concern, she has a granddaughter who lives in the county island, which would be affected, and I wanted to know exactly what was going on. I came, we both came away from there feeling very satisfied. All our worries went away. One of the things I loved is you leave Trilogy, if you go off of Blue Sky, all of that will be residential, which to me is huge, because I'm thinking in my mind, is it going to be commercial? What are you going to drive right out and look at? And so, as I looked at the overall plan, where you had put residential, where you had planned to put commercial, it made sense. Also, he pointed out, which I think a lot of people have to realize, we're concerned about open spaces, but so much of that land is riddled with gullies and washes, so it just really mandates those open spaces. And so my concern, I could see where some people are concerned, because I want to see that vision. I want to know what it's going to look like, and I know you can't exactly do that, but that will come down to, once we purchase the land, I would think the zoning then would be crucial, because I would like to see places like Seaside or Irvine as you drive into Trilogy. My time's up.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. So to, to kind of point, point out something, the idea and the concept around this initially was to actually put this into the city's hands for planning. We have an incredible planning department, we have an incredible staff. Anybody, anybody that wants to come and watch any of Mike Faust or watch him on, online where he puts 190 slides or something like that and go through the whole process, we know he loves that, I would take it in pieces, it's kind of like a mini-series. You could watch Suits or you could watch Mike Faust. It is, the idea and the concept originally was to actually either have one developer come in and try to do all this, which is impossible to do, or multiple developers and end up dicing these pieces up. And I'm going to give an example real quick before we go to the next question here or next speaker. When you look at the 101 and you look at the 303, the 303 was not to get people to, the federal funds and the state funds built the 303 to do one thing. And what is that? Not just transport people from one location to another. It was to actually build economic corridors throughout the area. Now, let's look at the 101. Raise your hand if you've driven on the 101 in the last 12 months. Pretty much everybody, right? I know, everybody's like, I'm not in high school or elementary school. But the reality is, if you look at the 101, there is a vast difference between when you go from Avondale to Glendale through Phoenix to the city of Peoria, back into Glendale and back into the city of Phoenix. Now, what's the difference? Peoria did not plan properly on the 101. This is the reality of it. Glendale planned two different areas. If you, if you talk to the former mayor, Elaine Scruggs, they took full advantage of the opportunity. We've, we've talked about it as council members multiple times. We've talked about it as an economic strategy. The 101, Glendale took full advantage of it because if you look at the northern corridor, basically from AJ's all the way, and now they have an REI, all these other pieces, they put economic corridors, and then housing was the next tier off of that freeway, which is exactly how Vestancia was developed, just so everybody understands that. The economic corridors are supposed to line the freeways, and that way we have shopping and we have the ability for restaurants. All of these things come, but we have not been able to actually drive this forward with state land. This is the first opportunity, and if we don't pass this, it could be the only opportunity in the next 10 to 15 or 20 years. And that is why there's so many people that are interested in moving this project forward. We either have developers come in and slice and dice us up, no offense against the developer, Mr. Larcher, right? In some ways, if you want to put a Desert Ridge, we would absolutely love that, right? And hopefully that brings your interest, because that's what we want, is we want shopping and dining. My wife had, I'm not going to say what birthday she had, but she's obviously a lot younger than I am. She had a birthday this last week. Where did we go? We could go to Bourbon and Bones, or where else do we go? We went to Scottsdale, because that's where she wanted to go. And we went over to Buck and Rider, right? How do we get those types of restaurants that everybody wants to the city of Peoria? How do we get those restaurants and shopping? We have to build them off the 303. If we don't, we will lose this opportunity, and we will see apartments, and then we will hear a completely different conversation, and people will be upset that we're building apartments on the, on the 303, just like we have on the 101, or building not, not building economic corridors. This is what brings hospitals, this is what brings medical, this is what brings shopping, this is what brings a very dynamic city and allows us to do this. I would rather have this in our city planning department's hands than multiple developers that are trying to drive their own economic interest. Our job up here at the DICE is to drive the city and the citizens' interest first, and that's why we're doing this. So that's the direction of this. Mr. James Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The questions and comments I will be asking and making are intended to be in the presence of the mayor and council, but not necessarily directed at the mayor and council. And also, I will mention, I live in Trilogy of Vestancia, so I have a little bit of an interest in the outcome of this. As citizens of this growing city, we should ask, what really do we want our city to be? Do we want a sleepy, little quiet suburb that has virtually little economy of its own, offers little in the era of shopping, dining, high-end medical care, and more importantly, jobs? Or do we want to be in charge of the inevitable, which means the city is going to grow and change whether we like it or not? Would we rather keep driving to Scottsdale for a fine dining experience or Phoenix, want a nice night out in the town that's not part of a chain, restaurants that's not part of a chain? Would we prefer to drive to Sun City, Sun City West, or Glendale to avail ourselves of the services of a hospital? If you're not retired, would you like to work, if it were possible, closer to home and save the money, time, and lower the constant risk of freeway travel? If we are retired, do we care really about our neighbors or folks in other neighborhoods in Peoria that are different than ours and who have to make these trips every day? Folks is part of the history and part of the public record. Just two years ago, Mayor Beck was elected by a significant majority who understood what his platform and plans were, and they liked them. That mayor and council then hired this city manager who built the staff, chosen because they were a fit to implement the council's publicly disclosed plans. Remember, we folks do not run the city. We hire people to run the city, based upon what they tell us they plan to do and our understanding of the needs. We then measure their effectiveness by how much of what was promised and was actually done and how well it was done. So why do we run to the side of the folks that lost in 2022 when we see something that brings out the "not in my backyard" reaction? Why are our decisions seem to be based on pure self-interest instead of the broader interests of the entire community? Why do we believe without questioning misrepresentations and sometimes outright falsehoods when the actual truth as evidence is available in print or online? You know, like the supposed zoning changes that never really happened? Finally, do we want a mayor and council that determines that a 10-year general plan is so perfect that no changes ever need to be contemplated or made? I think not. I'm in support of Amendment 26R, therefore.
Thank you, sir. Susan, I don't know if this is Lieber or Lober, I apologize. Lieber? Your penmanship's fine, my reading is horrible, so I apologize.
I do have something, try to talk fast because I have a few. Okay, so as far as the chip plant in Vestancia, never heard of that, first time I heard about it. My brother-in-law works for Micron, it's a very large, basically the same type of thing up in, they're one of the largest, actually, that they're building in North America, and they use an exponential amount of water. He's been working as an engineer there for 25 years, so. And when they use the water, it can't be reclaimed because it's done. So it's a concern. And also, I wouldn't want that in my backyard, so I kind of feel for those people in Vestancia because I don't think that's a good fit. I feel it should be pushed out. I know that's kind of what we're working on here. Additionally, Governor Hobbs, in 2025, no rental taxes, and so rental units will not be contributing the tax, the rental tax to our community. I know right now it's about 125 in deficit for our community. That'll go up, so I kind of wanted to know how many are going to be rentals as opposed to how many will be for sale, even industrial. As far as residential, I know industrial, a lot of rentals. Also, for the trust and our schools, how much of that sale price will go towards the trust to our schools? And also, can it be reallocated to a different place? I'd really like to know that. So those are some things maybe we can answer later, but I really would like to know that. Also, as far as the zoning and what have you, we did move to the suburban area because we like it in the suburbs. I understand things change, and I understand we do need to move forward, but I feel that there's just not a whole lot of transparency, and I do, I've heard some of the people say they don't trust what's going on, and I just wanted to say that it was said that they delivered monthly development notifications for the chip products to council members, but I don't think they were delivered to all the council members, were they delivered to the council member that represents our district, which is Mesquite. I live in the Mesquite district as well. I live right in the Mecca of it, basically on Joe Max and Lake Pleasant Parkway and off east of that. So it's a major concern for me. As far as the airport goes, we did come over, the airport analysis, my husband and I, and honestly, I've been working for the airlines for 26 years. We have a lot of experience with airlines, with airports. I don't feel that it would be in any way helpful for our community because it doesn't stand to help us. Most of the estimates and all the revenue is based on the businesses around the airport, not the actual airport.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. I appreciate it.
So I do not agree with that, and I just like more transparency so that we can trust you, because I think moderation in all things. I'm okay for moving, but I think we need to be honest and transparent with each other. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to address that, I'm going to address a couple of issues here real fast. So we're not going to, we're not going to tag one council member or another, but every single council member, including myself, gets monthly updates on information. So if that's not distributed in a, in a way that, you may not see that, ma'am, I apologize for that, but that's, that's the way that works. I, I promise you, and it's been talked about earlier in the meeting, that every single council member gets a, gets a monthly update on those pieces of information. Maybe communication doesn't necessarily go out the right way, or it's misspoken in the press, but you can't obviously always identify or make sure that that's, that's positive, but we do make sure that we are fully transparent on that and have been throughout this process. Water has been talked about a number of times, everyone. We have an agreement with Amcor, we've gone through this process, and we have, again, we just talked about water and, and the infrastructure around that. And the rental tax, I am going to address that issue, right? Rental tax, when we went through this process a year ago with the state legislature, and it was signed off by Governor Hobbs in this process, when it went through the state legislature, every single city lost rent tax, and it was a huge issue for a lot of cities. Do you know where it wasn't an issue? The city of Peoria. And you know why? Because we have a revenue-driven mindset. I've talked to multiple mayors, I'm going to say 20, but I'll say more than that, where I've had long conversations with mayors, when they come to me and say, what do you think we should do and why is Peoria different? Our job is to drive revenue to offset the loss of rental tax. And from a standpoint of, just so knowledge-based, it's $4.3 million that we actually lose having a rental tax taken away. Does it bother us? Where's Kevin Burke at? One person it bothers. Did it bother you after we said, "Don't worry about it, let's go drive revenue"? Zero, because we have a revenue-driven mindset whenever we're doing this. Our job is to drive businesses, to make sure that citizens spend more time and have the ability to be able to shop locally to do that. The way you avoid being able to worry about monetary losses like that from that standpoint is to have opportunities with restaurants and shopping in our city to be able to do those. those things, and that's offset that. So hopefully that answers your questions. Peggy Jacobs. Miss Peggy Jacobs, sorry.
Peggy Jacobs, Mesquite District. Mayor Beck, council members and staff. I'd like to address my support to approve the amendments to the general plan, especially Chapter 3, the smart growth. I live in Trilogy of Estancia. When Mayor Beck was being elected as mayor, I spoke to hundreds of people about the pillars that he represented, one of them being economic growth and the support behind that, to see change. The, these amendments support that promise and his ability to create economic growth. These amenities also provide plans to keep the money, taxes in our city, including jobs. A few days ago, I was playing pickleball over at the All Ages Community in Estancia, talking to some of the people that are working. One of them heads out to the 101 every day, one of them heads out to the 303, to the 17, to the 10. Another one heads down to the 303 to the 17. They spend a couple hours on, at least every day, in transportation that they'd much rather have with their family and friends than having a job in Peoria. I have listened to the plans. I agree that we want to see the city and the state working together for the planned development of the open land that we have. And I also want to see that the, the state doesn't just decide on its own what to do with it and how to increase the budget to have the restaurants and the other things that people want, that we don't want taxes increased for, to have those items. The approved amendments would be just to me, the voice of the people. That's what they voted in when they voted in Mayor Beck. They won in economic development. As far as the specific concerns about what would be included in that, I have a lot of trust in what's going on. I disagree with the transparency. I think that much is presented. If you go to council meetings, you watch them, you're aware of what's going on, you can always come and ask questions. So I have a problem with that grand generalization that there's not transparency. I trust, anyway, there also would be a Mesquite District member that would be able to represent and advocate for what's going on within the specific realms of Estancia. So again, I, I suggest that the amendments are approved for the betterment of our state and city.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Pat Walsh.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to raise some of my concerns. First of all, I do understand that the general plan is not zoning, and I really want to thank Mike Faust for all of his slides and information he provides. I have actually poured through these things for hours and hours and hours in trying to understand the difference between the general plan and also the planned community districts and, and also a planned area development. I think this distrust is, is basically because of what has happened in Estancia, Estancia being a planned community development and what was presented and communicated to the residents of Estancia of what their need, how their needs would be met, and then a major change happening with something that is deemed to be industrial, not office, industrial. Amcor is industrial. My prior profession, I was a CPA, I actually poured through the 10K, and I did present this in an email to council. And there is risk in their processes. Yes, we do have EPA, and we're fortunate enough to have someone as a city manager that is an expert in this area. And I'm sure that you are addressing this, but it needs to be communicated to the community. The processes that they use, lead is in the water, and that water is going to be recycled. Will it get into our system? They produce gases. Those gases are subject to explosion. There's a risk for fire and other damage. Do we need an evacuation plan? Has that been done? What's the due diligence in the development of this company now that you have a development agreement and they're beginning to break land? Those are the safety concerns. Water security are some of the things that are needed in addressing when you bring industry into our area. Also, when you talk about piecemeal, a PAD regulations, which now all state land would be, is an area between 10 and 600 acres. Now, we're talking about a massive amount of land that's being presented as the state land that will become available. So that means that we are going to have piecemeal dozens and dozens and dozens of planned area development because they can be between 10 and 600 acres. Yes, it gives the city more flexibility in order to work on the developers that would be coming in to each of these planned areas. However, how are you going to communicate this to us? How is it going to be presented to us? How are our needs going to be met? And how are we going to have conservation in a very significant Lake Pleasant area? Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you for, thank you for your time. Mr. Tom Bodoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mike and Chris. Excellent presentations. Appreciate all that great information. My name is Tom Bodoff. I live in Trilogy of, at the Estancia community. I strongly support the general plan amendments being voted on this evening. When passed, smart growth will support the new trajectory for Peoria that Mayor Beck ran on and to which he and council are now delivering. These changes to the general plan will contribute significantly to the creation of local jobs in the Mesquite District, and they will secure long-term revenue for the entire city, all the while ensuring future development is both smart and cohesive, not fragmented, which would likely occur if the changes to the general plan were denied. Sadly, I continue to witness the acceleration of opposition to the well-thought-out plan for North Peoria. And the worst part of it all, it's based on misinformation, even flat-out lies. While there are a few legitimate concerns that always accompany growth, like increased traffic, these should indeed be discussed, and they are. The reality is, our city leaders and staff are extremely talented, far more than the opponents are aware of or will ever admit, because it refutes their entire narrative. The attacks are politically charged, not based on facts, but rather unfounded fear. I'm personally disgusted with the character assassinations of the mayor, the city manager, and the staff. The notion that there exists a cultural lacking transparency, conducting all kinds of backroom shenanigans, receiving under-the-table payoffs, lacking character, integrity, and honorable leadership, it's all nonsense, but has found a welcoming home in closed Facebook groups and the next-door cesspool. And it's being led by a few individuals who will do anything to disrupt the vision set forth by this mayor and council, well, at least most of the council. Not in my backyard, NIMBY has taken on a whole new meaning for the district I live in. I find myself reminding more and more folks that a big chunk of Peoria does exist, south of Happy Valley Road. The state land in North Peoria must be sold, which I'm now realizing the vast majority of residents, at least until tonight, were not aware of. In fact, most of them don't even know that it is state land, not city. They believe the thousands of undeveloped acres in North Peoria is state preserve and should remain so forever. They now know that our Arizona State Constitution demands otherwise. So moving forward, my sincere hope is that we might somehow come together as a community and a city and begin the process of having honest discussions in how to be successful and civil in supporting the growth that lies ahead for Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Paul Pals.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and staff. Thank you for allowing me to have a second to support the general plan amendment. I'd also like to personally thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for your continued growth of the community in a very transparent way. To become a more fiscally sustainable city, the city needs to expand its employment and commercial footprint. This is a top goal, obviously, of the general plan, and I believe the city council. Peoria is largely a bedroom community. We've heard it from several people here tonight. Upwards of 80% of the people that work are working individuals in Peoria, leave Peoria to work. That increases congestion on the roads, pollution, wasted time, not to mention the drain of tax dollars that could be spent in Peoria going to other communities and other areas. This plan enhances the quality of life by providing opportunities to work and play in the Peoria community. Some people might consider more time with their family a punishment, but I'd prefer to be with my family than sitting in traffic and wasting time on the road. The vast majority of the remaining vacant land, as we've heard, great presentations, thank you. The vast majority of the remaining land in the city is owned by the Arizona State Trust. Approximately 75% of the remaining land. We're running out of land for suitable sites to prioritize growth. This effort positions our state land and the Loop 303, Lake Pleasant Parkway corridor, for newer prioritized development prospects. The city has long identified that Loop 303 and Lake Pleasant Parkway corridor as critical to meeting the community and economic development goals of Peoria. To get here, this requires strategic partnership with the Arizona Land Department, and I believe that's what this plan represents. The Arizona Land Department and the city recognizes the strategic positioning of this area and given the Taiwan plant and the growth of the supply chain and the vast number of residential units already in Northwest Peoria and along the I-17 corridor, it's critical for this plan to go through. This area is prime for meeting the community and economic goals, providing opportunities for economic growth to serve the existing, excuse me, and growth of future businesses as well as residences. And I personally, as with others, would prefer not to have to drive, oh, an hour back and forth to go into Scottsdale or some other area to have a nice evening out. It would be nice to have those developments in my community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council.
Thank you for your time, sir. Ms. Shannon Simo? I, I apologize. Okay, I'll, I'll wait. Perfect timing on my part, right? Great, great job, Mayor. Mr. Jim Keller.
My name is Jim Keller. I've lived in Peoria 42 years now. And if that doesn't surprise you, I'm returning 91 on the Friday of this week. My comments are directed to the general plan amendment to the smart growth area, specifically to the NPG 1620 acres and the PIC 6700 acres. The proposals that have been presented here today will develop a master plan cohesive development for new businesses and industries, creating jobs for Peoria residents. I would like to remind the city council members that Mayor Jason Beck was elected by the majority vote in the residence of the city of Peoria. His commitment was for economic development, job creation for the people in Peoria. Mayor Jason has made this opportunity presented here today for the city to achieve the major economic growth that he committed to. I'm, I'm reminded of this. I spent 42 years in the business world. The CEO of the company I represented was in the agricultural machinery industry. The CEO reminded us many times that when an opportunity presents itself, you better start taking a look at it because you may not have another chance at an opportunity as such. The CEO of the company I worked for purchased many small companies during these years. 20 years ago, they purchased several of them. That company grew from a million-dollar company to over $2 billion companies last year. Had they not have made that decision to take advantage of those opportunities, they would still be a million-dollar company. That happens. That's happening right now to the city of Peoria to have the opportunity to make the growth that this city will experience in the next 10-plus years. I would like to say to the city council members, don't let negative resistance deter you from looking down the road for 10-plus years. I, I know that oppositions, that's natural in business. We went through them for 42 years. And I'm saying to you, lots of times, the opposition doesn't thoroughly understand what the future really will bring. And I would like to say, finally, in support of Mayor Beck's economic development plans, I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of the amendments that are being presented. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Now, I, I want to say one thing. I hope when I'm 91 years old, that I'm still crushing it like you are. Rochelle Dobson? I apologize if I'm saying.
This is Rochelle.
Oh, Richard Dobson. Okay, hold on a second. It's my fault. I didn't put my glasses on. I apologize. Mr. Richard Dobson. Not my fault.
Thank you, Council, for having me. I just have a few statements. My most important statement is I am here to support this amendment, and I concur with all of the positive statements that I've heard tonight. And the one thing that I appreciate the most is your vision. In 20, in 50 years ago, which wasn't that long ago for some of us, in, in the 1970s, Arrowhead was an orchard, and there was no master plan at that point. And then, look what's happened. The Peoria Police Department had about 12 officers. They now have 200-plus officers. The updated master plan has vision and looks towards a, 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 I'm having a hard time, smart financial vision, and state land master plan and advanced rezoning as part of this plan to create and revenue streams that benefit us all. I would, I would end by saying, I spent some time in Chicago, which is a story unto itself in government, but in that, in that time, I lived in what somebody called a bedroom community. And it was truly a bedroom community. There was no business. Our taxes were one-third higher than the rest of the city, and that was a lot to say because the rest of the city is pretty high taxes, as it pertains to property taxes. I don't want to be, I don't want to be a bedroom community. I want to be a well-balanced community that supports economic growth and is centric to financial fiscal responsibility. And I appreciate your vision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go back to Ms. Shannon Simo? Of course, I called on you the first time when you walked out. My apologies.
Hello. I'm not really sure where to start because a lot of comments have been made, and there are a lot of questions that I have, especially for the, are you, your city planners? Or, right, those gentlemen? Okay. Because the city planners have said quite a bit, and there was so much to write down. And I would like to make a suggestion for next time. When you show the graphs and the maps, make it bigger so we can see and understand and see what street is what would be very helpful. Second thing I'd like to say is, I don't remember when Mayor Beck was running, and I was all for the, the ideas of expanding business and all of those things, but I don't remember. anything ever about a chip plant ever being mentioned. I'd also like to say that TMC or TSMC has changed the landscape. The first time I was here, I was told we couldn't discuss TSMC because it was a Phoenix problem. It wasn't our problem. Well, now it's become our problem. So, you're building a chip factory in a residential area, or whatever they do, testing and packaging. So, I'm asking that I don't remember in your vision for the five pillars for the community, anything ever being mentioned about any type of industrial building. It was mainly commercial. I'd also like to ask, the Biscuit Flax area that you guys are looking to purchase is next to my house. So, when you were saying, if we purchase that land, it might give us the opportunity to put something else in there. Now, I'm just asking if I misunderstood? I'm trying to look for clarification. I don't want anything built over there. We never, I don't, I like where I live, the way it is. It's open, there's desert, it's quiet. I'd like it to stay that way. I'd also like to say that while some of the, or Mike mentioned in his presentation that you follow state and law and code, and you do, and that's great, but there's not a lot of public disclosure or in a way that everybody can understand what exactly all of this means in a very simple, fourth-grader way, so we don't have to spend hours poring over it to understand it. I'd also like to request that if speakers are gonna go ahead and dump on the people that oppose it, and nobody up here makes a face about it, but yet Mr. Budorf can say whatever he wants about the opposition, I don't think is fair. I just don't. I haven't said, I didn't hear anybody in opposition saying anything negative about the people that are for it, and I don't feel that his comments were necessarily fair to the rest of us. We all live here.
So...
And I think it would be fair to consider all of us in these decisions. Even if you don't like our opinion, that's okay. We don't like yours, but we have to get along.
So, I would agree with you, ma'am, but what I would tell you is, I would agree with you from a standpoint of this. Multiple people in here disagree with each other. I don't think that anybody took offense, maybe from...
I did.
Well, I can't control your feelings.
I can't control the faces you make when people talk and you don't like what they have to say, and you look at Henry Darwin.
Did I look at Henry Darwin, or am I looking at the attorney?
I don't know who you're looking at.
So, the issue is...
We already know that this is all going to go through anyway. All of you are going to vote with him. I know my time is mine.
Your time is up. So, what I will...
You sit down. I don't know why NIMBY is a thing. We lived here longer.
Go ahead, have a seat, ma'am. I appreciate your comment. Thank you. I know, I know. So, as I said, if, there's been multiple people up here, including talking about transparency and talking about how they would like other people to be transparent. We have had a total of nine open meetings throughout this process. This is not a conversation, ma'am, this is a statement. This is not a conversation, ma'am. You're welcome to leave. So, the issue is, we have had tons of open, transparent information. Just because there was an election and somebody puts up transparency and says that there's no transparency, I can tell you from a previous information and looking at the previous administration, this administration and the process that the city managers have put out information is four to five times more transparent than any other time in this city, any other time. Four years ago, we had electioneering during process and rezoning, giving an example. I apologize for using you as an example, Ms. Osuna, but we actually, we actually had areas where we actually, the previous mayor and some city managers went around her actual neighborhood to make sure that she was not in a specific district so it could not be voted on, or that she could not run for a council seat. That was how part of the previous administration was actually run. And that's a factual statement and a factual data point that people don't want to understand. So, Mr. Forsyth, when somebody wants to talk about transparency, and you actually look at the issues that are actually going on and how much information is going, this is where we're going with this. So, while I actually appreciate your comments, I truly do, I want to make sure that you actually have the ability to come and communicate every single time. I want to make sure that every single person has the ability to communicate every single time. That does not mean you pick out and choose one person to actually designate whether he makes a comment or not. He did not do that to somebody else. I would appreciate if other people don't do that to other citizens as well. Again, you all have to live with each other. We all have to live with each other in this process. Our jobs are not to beat up on one candidate or another. The election's over with, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be like that, guys. I do smirk. You're absolutely right. Because I'm actually, so the issue is, I will, I do smirk, and the reason why is because I'm an actual human being. So, the issue, I'm not having a conversation with you, ma'am. The issue is, is this. The issue is, is if somebody actually wants to go through the process and you actually, somebody questions our integrity through this, that's the way it works. So, Mr. Ed Malina.
First of all, I just want to come straight out and say that I am in full support of the General Plan Amendment from the get-go. I don't think there's anybody else in here that has lived in Peoria as long as I have. I moved to Peoria in nineteen sixty. Becky, you probably, or Eva, you probably lived a little bit longer. Eva probably lived here a little bit longer than I have because you were born here. I moved here in nineteen sixty. Prior to that, I lived in Glendale. Peoria was a city, a small village that was two miles square, from Ninety-Ninth Avenue to Seventy-Fifth, from Olive to Cactus. And that was about four thousand people that lived in the city of Peoria, or town of Peoria at that time. Richard, you said that there were like twelve officers when you remembered that. My father-in-law was one of two police officers in the city of Peoria when I was living here. Okay? So, I've seen Peoria go through a tremendous growth and tremendous evolution, and it is incredible what has happened. I literally worked with or for virtually several of the mayors before they were mayors. I've since then come back to Peoria and have moved up into, I was in Mesquite District until there was a rezoning, and then I got pushed into the Willow District. But nevertheless, I've seen a tremendous amount of growth. The reality is, you look at that map on that wall, and where you see that little corridor down at the bottom, that's where we are today. What you realize, or what you need to realize, is that Bell Road, even Happy Valley, Happy Valley Road potentially would be the middle of Peoria in twenty to twenty-five years from now. What we need to make sure happens is that we have smart growth, and part of this general plan accommodates that, so that we have a growth that incorporates all of what we need to succeed. Create the jobs, create the housing areas, maintain the open space, protect the desert environment where we can. Most of the land is state land, but in, the state land is going to be sold, it's going to be developed whether we want it to or not. In nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-five, I probably wouldn't have cared if any of you moved in here. In fact, back then, I'd have probably said, please don't come. But today, being a little bit wiser, a little bit older, I thank you for having come because you have created part of this growing community that has been very successful, and I think it will continue to be, provided we do it smartly. I urge you to back this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I'm Angelie Wesson, and I'm an Arizona native. So, for some people that think that it's just gullies and washes, those were actually created hard work by the ancient ones, the Huugum. The Huugum were the ones that created those gullies and washes that actually brought the greenery and the water to this arid area. Otherwise, we would have looked the exact same way if you go up on I-17 on the way to Prescott. That's what this whole area should have looked like. But the ancient ones knew smart growth, and smart growth includes water. And what I'm looking at here with this General Plan Amendment, I oppose wholeheartedly. You have your choices, A through E. Look at it, see it. Option C, deny. Because this format that you have right now is going to cannibalize community by design. And I'm sorry, Mr. Vestar, I am not driving to Desert Ridge to go to another Target when I already have one at Four Corners. When it comes to the legal public process, I don't even know if your supporters know, your sixty-day review was from April eleventh to June nineteenth, but then you ended up making an amendment on April twelfth, April twenty-fifth, and then it was an Exhibit One, another amendment published on August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, of additional roads that are supposed to go private. How can we do a sixty-day review on items that were not even there? And when it comes to the city, I'm glad that we ended up using the form of Thor's Hammer because when I saw it, I thought of a tomahawk. But let's go with the idea of Thor's Hammer. The way that the city is portraying now, is it even worthy to hold Thor's Hammer? Because what I'm seeing right now, the way that it's been treating the public with this legal review of sixty days but not showing everything, and then talking about the General Plan Amendment about walkability, we can't walk through a semiconductor chip factory. And when it comes to the process, this process, you're talking about small businesses and restaurants, but these impact fees that have created, the raise of utilities this year, and being so revenue-driven, there is no small business or small restaurants that would be able to do it, only other chain restaurants. And what some other people would call it hodgepodge, some other communities actually call it culture, personality. So, that way, we don't look like yet another location that you blink and you think, okay, it doesn't, it looks like everything else. So, when I look at it, maybe we could be, we're Lake Pleasant, could we be Lake Tahoe? Could we be something worth looking at and worthy to consider Peoria?
Thank you for your time, ma'am. Mr. Steve Coulter.
Steve Coulter, good evening, Mayor, Council. I live in Trilogy, Vostancia, in the Mesquite District. I'm right by Five North and where all this development is going on. I leave my house and drive on El Mirage every day. We can walk up to the shops there, and I'm so thrilled to see the development. When this current administration and the mayor ran, he ran on a three-fold step process, a strategy of crime, water, and economic development. And from what I've seen so far, he's addressed, and the administration has addressed, all those areas in crime, improving the police force, the training, the serviceability, water, being able to retain it and use it more wisely and reuse it. And now, here's an economic development portion, and I fully support it, and I encourage the people in the council to vote for it. One of the reasons is it increases the tax base. We can get a better tax base rather than just getting a tax base from residents. We want to keep our services high without increasing our own taxes. Another is, it creates a cohesive, a cohesive economic plan. I really appreciated the developer that spoke earlier and said, if you don't have a plan like this, it creates a real mess, a real hodgepodge. It's a coordinated strategy. I also applaud the transparency. A number of people have said they don't feel like there's transparency. Well, Chris and Mike Faust have tailored their slides to be even more transparent. They're addressing questions they've received throughout the last week or two, specifically to address the questions. They're bending over backwards to address the issues, and I think they're very transparent. I also trust this group. I trust them because they've made campaign promises, and they're fulfilling those campaign promises, and they're so transparent. They wouldn't do that, they'd be doing, making decisions behind closed doors. So, I don't think, when I say I trust this council and the mayor so far, I'm coming from a position of naivete. I think they've earned that so far, from what I've seen. I like the phrase Mr. Faust used, it unlocks our state land. It enables us to use it to its potential, like Jim Keller said. These opportunities don't come around that often. We want to unlock that state land so that we can use it wisely. So, I think it's the right plan for the right time. I support it, and I encourage you folks to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It feels good to stand up for a minute. Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. My name's Lori Bango. I live in Willow District, and I am the Republican Party Chairman of Legislative District Twenty-Eight, and I just wanted to bring a little bit different perspective. I heard some numbers. Sixty-six people sent in negative comments or in opposition. Ninety-two total sent in feedback. Is that, are those numbers about accurate? Peoria has a population of about two-hundred-thousand people, roughly. I think it was one-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, something like that. So, we're talking a very fraction of a percent. We have that are in opposition to come speak, to send an email. Those numbers are quite staggering, I think, that we have only sixty-six people out of two-hundred-thousand people who are willing to send in in opposition. We have about three-hundred-and-seventy-four precinct committeemen in Legislative District Twenty-Eight. We knock thousands and thousands and thousands of doors in Peoria, and we talk to voters all the time. And we hear on the ground, talking to people at their doors, that they support Mayor Beck, they support the council, they support your plans. And I think we have to keep in mind that lies can spread like wildfire. You can't believe everything you read on the internet, so we always have to remember that. And I just want to share that we have to try to have some sort of unity here in this city and see the good and what this council and the mayor is doing and in their plans. And they mean the best for us. They are transparent, they are honest. I absolutely trust them, and I have seen them fulfill those promises and be men and women of their word. So, I support the city council's plan for smart growth in Peoria. The mayor was elected based on the ideas for improving the economy and public safety. To back up these goals, the council and staff have created a plan to make sure development is well-organized and not scattered. There's been a lot of false information and fear-mongering about this plan. Nine hundred people in a Facebook group, okay. But we have, these amendments have a clear vision, and they protect our environment and ensures that development fits well into our city. They will also help improve our city's financial future by boosting tax revenue through thoughtful development. Smart growth measures will help us fully use the areas like North Peoria Gateway and Peoria Innovation Core, attracting businesses that will generate future revenue without sacrificing the open space. Supporting these changes will help Peoria grow in the long run, create jobs, and keep the city's look and feel. The mayor, council, and staff have worked very hard in their efforts. Thank you so much for your amazing presentations. I thought they were incredibly thorough and very detailed, and I just ask for your support in this vote and ask you to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Klur.
Hold on, let me put, let me put my glasses back on. Oh, I apologize, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Joe Klur from Vostancia in the Mesquite District. I don't have a prepared speech, so I'm just going to discuss. I'd like to address this issue, first of all, about transparency. There's been a lot of talk about that. I make an effort to be involved in city government. I want to know what's going on in my community and in the city of Peoria. So, I do a lot of reading. I check the website fairly regularly and what have you. But I got to tell you, nobody likes to work for a micromanager that you just want to get your job done and do your business. And I kind of feel the same way about my city. I don't want to hear, Chris, every time you get a call from somebody who's thinking about doing business here or developing here, don't send me any emails until it's a real deal and it looks like it's going to develop, okay? Thank you. I'm here in support of the Smart Growth Initiative. I think it's a... I think it's a very, very wise thing to do for the city to make sure that we continue to stay with the aesthetics of our development as intended, particularly in Vostancia and North Peoria. So, I'm very supportive of the idea. I appreciate the forethought that's gone into this and the planning. We mentioned time. We don't have time. Right now, the explosive growth in economic development is in the chip industry. I'm sure you saw lots of articles about it and what have you. You have to strike now if you're going to take advantage of that. If you don't, you're going to lose those opportunities. So, we don't have time, in my opinion. The other thing, this particular thing, this initiative, it's not about the airpark. Airparks are always going to be a hot-button issue in any community you go to, and that's fine. But this is not the time or the place. These two issues need to be bifurcated. You can't vote no on this because of a feared airpark without voting no on revenue generation for the city, significant revenue generation, development, smart, you know, master plan development. That's what we're here today, and I think it's important that you keep that in mind when you vote, that that's what you're voting on. You're not voting on an airpark or anything to do with that. And I thank you very much, and my bedtime is 7:30, Mayor.
Now, we will close the public hearing. So, with that, counsel, do we have any further discussion or questions? We're not voting yet, so let's see. Do we have any? None? None? Okay. With that, let me put my glasses back on to make sure I say everything correctly here. Counsel, do we now have motion for Item 26R? We are going to vote on these items separately. Counsel, we will now make a motion to vote on each individual item. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 26R?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Please sec... Please vote.
Counselor Member Dunn, how do you vote?
And it passes 6-1. Next will be... Counsel, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 27R?
So...
I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Counselor Member Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Crawford?
Yes.
Let me try again. One second.
Thank you.
All right. Try again. Edwin?
And again, it passes 6-1. Thank you. Counsel, do I have a motion to approve 28R?
So...
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Counselor Member Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
And it passes 6-1. Thank you. Counsel, do I have a motion to approve 29R?
Motion.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Counselor Member Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor?
And it passes 6-1. Thank you. All right. So, with that, 26, 27, 28, and 29R are passed. We will now take a five-minute recess.